Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Warrant and bills have been signed.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. I'll second. All in favor? Okay. We're going to defer the minutes till the next meeting?
Yeah, I think table of minutes.
Yeah. Town administrators, weekly update. Jennifer?
All right, just a couple of things for you tonight. First, in your packet, you will see a combined schedule. I've also just given one to Mr. Long. We'll get this emailed out. But essentially, David, when Tom was in this morning, we took the time to put together the school budget, the municipal budget, the warrant and finance committee budget, because a little later in the agenda, we may be talking about needing to add a date for an additional meeting that Tom will get into more detail. So I thought it'd be easier, instead of all the individual ones, to have that. So you put this right on your refrigerator. You'll know where you need to be. It's pretty intense, so.
So is this being posted, or?
It will be, but I mean, as everything, I try to give it to the board first.
Sure, sure.
Give it to the chair, and I'll get it posted tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Just FYI, follow-up from our last meeting. Sabago Technics, that was the one engineer RFP that we got, did confirm that they would be here on February 22nd at 6:00 to do a presentation. So that will be.
Are we making some effort to sort of verify fees on this?
On the engineer, yes. You gave me a list of questions for last week. We're working on answers.
Great, thank you.
So you'll have them before the presentation.
Yeah.
Next, I'm looking for permission to bring in a former employee two days a week. Our office assistant is going out on medical for about six weeks. So I'm looking to bring Cheryl Driscoll in two days a week, just the nights that we're here late, Wednesdays and Thursdays, to kind of pick up a little secretarial.
I have no issue with that.
Is that a paid leave for so?
No.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Last, just to let you know, everybody in TV land, we still have over 100 dogs unlicensed in the town of Acton. And at this point, there's a $25 late fee, so your $6 dog became 31. The animal control officer is actually going to be getting the dog warrant soon. You've got to get these dogs registered.
He's going to be getting the what?
A list of warrants. So his job as ACO is to go knock on doors, give them seven days to register them. After that, they get a court summons for an unlicensed dog.
Fair enough.
He does. We have called, we've sent letters, we're doing our best to help him out, but.
I'm sorry, how many were there again?
Almost 100.
Okay.
You're not on there, Tom, I checked.
No, 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 no.
Our officer's going to be working overtime.
All right, so that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Department head, committee chair updates. Code enforcement officer.
Well, just, I'm updating you guys. Last time I had been here was a few weeks ago, probably three weeks. One of the things you had asked for me, because, just to, I guess, reiterate, we increased some of the fees in the land use department. So it was asked for me to go around to neighboring towns to provide you guys with some of the fees of their fee schedules. So that was done. Some of, one of the towns, I wanted to take it off, but it never got taken off. They just wouldn't get back to us. And they didn't really have their fees online. It's kind of hard to understand, because it doesn't, not everybody has the same verbiage. So some things might be hiding. And if there's any questions, just feel free to reach out to me. And I can really explain where they're going with those fees.
Just perusing this thing.
Yeah.
It appears that we have more individual fee items than most towns. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, a lot of theirs will be combined into just the building fees. And then even with their planning board fees, you have, for instance, I can share with you, you know, my planning board, site plan review is $250, Waterborough's is $2,000. But we also do final preliminary and stuff like that. And then there's a lot of fees, not a lot, there's a few fees on here that I don't charge, because I don't permit anymore. And I probably should have had them struck in, like electrical. The town removed electrical permits, as well as mechanical permits, to get them out of liability. Because we're not electrical inspectors, we shouldn't be permitting. So that was a.
When we brought in Mike Gilpatrick.
Right.
Got rid of the propane and the mechanical, because, well, that issue we had up in Farmington, where the place blew up with the propane, you know, who's doing the inspections on that? You don't have a licensed propane man. Expecting it with the licensed propane guy, put it in, you know, so we figured.
But the permit came from the town.
Yeah, but the permit came from the town.
As well as like stormwater mitigation, the previous person would do it for everything. I only do it within the shoreline zone, wherever it's really pertinent, you know, where you've got to worry about the stormwater, more or less than that. So there's a lot of things, there's some things that I don't charge for, that we're being charged for.
This is the purview of the board of selectmen? Or is it the planning board? I just want to clarify, who has a role in setting these fees?
Board of selectmen.
Board of selectmen.
Only the board of selectmen.
Do we ever consult with the planning board on this, or is it really not a matter?
They don't really, unless.
It's not a matter for them?
Also, the planning board.
Okay, I just want to understand what that practice had been. I don't know, it just seems to me that, you know, being a trained accountant, consistency is, I think, important. And when you look at the other towns, and if we see that we have fees that we're collecting, that many of the other towns are not, I guess the question is, why are we doing that? What's the rationale for?
I don't have an answer for all of that, but I can tell you that Acton has more shoreline, shoreline. And the law, some of these fees do pertain to like 30% expansion. You only get that within the shoreline zone. So Acton has, and there's a lot of time and effort that goes into verifying that they have the right information. So it's not just, it's, you're paying, the fee goes to paying for the time that takes to research this.
So you think it's really a reflection of the effort by your office?
Yeah, I would say that's why they were assigned, that's why they started doing them. If you want to reevaluate the schedule or the fee amount, then that's fine, but.
Some of these were camouflaged in with other ones.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and to go back, I mean, to add to what Jason said, one of the big parts is the amount of lakes that we have in the town. I mean, if you look at these other towns, as far as, you know, shoreline, they just don't have it. And the administrative work, and the, you know, the postage, and the work that's behind setting some of these, I mean, that's why they were originally put in.
You know, if I were, and I am, but I'm not arguing for myself, but as a property owner on a lake, they tend to pay a pretty high tax, tax because of the valuation of lake property. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get my head around what the rationale is for charging for particular things and not for others.
I wish I had an answer for you. I didn't, like I said, I didn't set these fees. I've just kind of gone by what this fee schedule is and assigning the fees that, what I have. I have no problem trying to figure out a way around it. But like I said, a lot, there is a lot of time that goes into some of this stuff.
I'm more just trying to back up to understand what the underlying principle is around this. Why are we charging these fees? For which things should we be charging for? Should we not be charging a fee for? I think effort is a factor. But, you know, it's kind of like the issue that, at some point, we're going to take up, charging fees for the for the transfer station. I personally don't think we, you know, if there's something that's really excessive, I personally, I think we ought to charge a fee for that. But I don't think we ought to be charging people for tires and, you know, things that routinely people will want to dump in. That's what the tax rate covers. So we can defer this for another time.
Yeah, it's fine.
And I'll take a closer look at this, but I guess I've said enough about it right now. But I think it's worth a discussion at a future meeting.
And I'm not opposed to whatever you want to, whatever you want to present. Like I said, I just go with what I was given to go by, and.
We should look at the revenues from that department for the last amount of years.
I'm sorry?
We should look at the revenues for that department and how it offsets. But some of the things, I think, Tom, once you go through and look at it, is I noticed Waterborough may not have a growth permit fee. It says NA, but however, under new structures, they charge $250. Well, that's the same as our $300 growth permit. So I think it's where some of it's located.
I have a study of it. I'm just looking at the.
Let's dig into it a little bit.
Yeah, and putting it, putting, well, like I said, that's also verbiage, trying to figure out where it goes. And then when you only have a small box on an Excel program, you can't kind of put the description of what it's supposed to be. So I mean, it's something, I'd love for you to come and sit down, and we can discuss it.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Jason?
Nope.
Thank you for coming tonight. Liaison updates. I don't have anything, David?
I don't either.
Let's, Kim, of course, is not here tonight. Old business, water system installation update. I didn't understand, we have a status on that, Jennifer?
Yes, so the plumber and Mr. HGO have finally tied hands together. So Mr. Kittredge is going to be doing the work this month, within the next couple of weeks. And we've got scheduled for installation the 1st of March for Mr. H2O.
Wonderful, wonderful.
We're moving on it.
Very good. Roy Talbot's status. Is this for me?
Yes.
Okay.
So we had a presentation?
Yes, we did. We had a presentation. And I think the board needs to talk more about this. I think from, well, first off, I think we have to establish at a board level whether or not we think this is a good service to pursue. And so maybe at our next meeting, we could put that on the agenda to have a discussion.
Yeah, I think with the three of us here, we'd get down to 30 on this one.
I think if we decide, the board decides they want to move forward with this, the next question will be, what do we do in terms of process? And I had a chance to talk to Mr. Roy today. Because he has indicated a couple of times that he has other towns that are waiting in the wings. We are their first priority. We have right of first refusal, but that will not last forever. And he basically told me he'll honor that through the end of April. So we need to be able to make a decision that we can have confidence that will allow us to, if we decide to go forward, sign a contract with Mr. Roy by April 30. So that was kind of back up from there. We've got between now and April 30 to kind of deal with this issue. And you could put it on as a ballot item? Put it on the ballot when the school budget goes forward?
We can't, no. Yeah, we can't sign a contract without a special town meeting. That's where we're headed.
Unless we have the funds. Well, we can't sign a contract, but you mean, we couldn't hire, even if we had the funds in the government?
You could, I'm not saying that it's the clean method I would recommend, but, I mean, I think that, you know, and this is a big, big step for the town of Acton. I think a special town meeting is in your best interest if the board decides.
I really think that, because, you know, there is some people who believe that we are staying the way we're doing it. And it's a big move, a lot of money. And it puts us in a different direction. So the school budget is when?
May 6th.
So we can't do that.
Let me check my handy dandy.
So I guess next week, what we should be discussing is when?
If we decide to move forward.
Yeah.
Then we should talk about, I think, a special town meeting, and develop a warrant, and pick a date, and run that through the warrant and finance committee.
And we don't have anything else that's pinned right there, that we could slide into that, make it worthwhile?
No.
More worthwhile?
What are you thinking about?
The conversation that we had with the CEO before we came in, but let me give it some more thought and talk to him.
All right, okay. So we'll tee that up for our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Mike Harwood, thank you for joining us this evening, coming all the way from North Carolina.
That's correct.
Well, thank you for making that trip. Shows you have a real interest in this project.
I do.
We appreciate that. You are with TRCC?
TRC. TRC.
It's funny, because some of the emails say TRCCs. We weren't sure which way it was, so.
Okay, TRC, we'll strike that. Thank you.
What does that stand for?
Honestly, it doesn't stand for anything anymore. At one time, you know, the company's been bought and sold so many times, you know, but.
That's great. All right, so you responded to an RFP to perform a facility condition assessment.
That's right.
We have that document, we've had a chance to review it. But thank you for coming, and the floor is yours. Why don't you take a few moments and tell us what it is you do, and why that might be important for us, and we can.
Absolutely.
The board may have some questions, and when that's done, we can open it up to the public.
Okay, that's great. I did, I had a PowerPoint presentation, but I'm not sure how much really, you know, how we want to get into that. I think it'd be easier just to talk, so.
There's copies over there in the public, if anybody wants them.
So I'll introduce myself and provide a little bit of background on TRC and the services that we offer, and specifically how we would approach this project. So my name is Mike Harwood. I'm a civil engineer. I have a master's degree in civil engineering. I've got well over 25 years of professional experience. I'm registered in six states as a professional engineer. I've been doing this for a long time. I've been with TRC now for just a couple of years. Prior to that, much of my career with another three-letter agency called ATC, another consulting firm. And we have, over the past couple of years, been building up, TRC is largely an environmental consulting company. We do a lot of work for the power industry and other, you know, real estate, private real estate clients. My group in building sciences, we've been building up, and we just do these property condition assessments and facility condition assessments. This is all we do in my group. There's six of us scattered across the country that do this type of work. The two services, the property condition assessment is generally done when a private client wants to buy or sell a property. So if somebody wants to buy an office building, for example, they would hire us to go in and do a top-to-bottom review, an assessment of the facility, and provide a cost over a certain period of time, typically 10 years. Usually, it's the same length as the loan that they would get for the property. And we would give them the costs that the building would need to stay in operation at its current condition. So if the roof needs to be replaced in three years, we would put a cost in the table in year three for a full roof replacement for that facility. If the asphalt needs to be, you know, replaced, or a mill and overlay, or something like that, you know, everything, the elevators, electrical, fire suppression systems, you know, interior finishes, basically anything associated with that property that might cost money over the next 10 years, we would look at, and we'd put a cost table together. And our clients generally would use that either to negotiate, if they're trying to purchase the property, or to give the buyer some peace of mind if they're trying to sell the property. So that's usually for private property transactions. The similar service is called the facilities condition assessment. That's generally done for public clients, where there's no plan to sell the property, but they're going to use the information that we produce for property management. They need to know where to put their limited resources, and where to get the most bang for the buck in keeping the facility in use and, you know, up to par for how it intends to be used. So, you know, the difficult things in property management, first of all, you know, a lot of the clients that we have that are municipalities like this, may not even really know what they own. They, you know, they know, okay, we've got this building, and this building, and this building, but they may not know the square footage of each building. They may not know exactly what the different systems are. So the first thing to do is go through and establish, you know, everything. Produce a detailed report that shows exactly what you own, what types of systems are present, what the ages of those systems are, what the expected useful life and anticipated remaining useful life of that system is, what type of maintenance do we foresee over the next 10 years, and what the replacement costs might be if it needs to be replaced. So that's, in a nutshell, that's the type of work that we would do.
So how would a client use that information? Let's say on a facility like this. How would your information be useful to us?
For capital budget planning is the primary use. So if you've got a limited budget to put money into a building like this, you want to know, you know, first of all, what are immediate needs, what are the things that absolutely need to be fixed now, you know, for immediate funding? And then after that, what we'll do is we'll categorize the different needs. There's, you know, currently critical, which would be like, you know, something that really needs to be fixed right away. And then there are other, like, you know, we can name it, different things depending on what you want to name. But generally, we'll break it down into four categories. Something that needs to be fixed right now, something that is still critical, but can wait a couple of years. Then there's typical maintenance throughout the term, which would be just anticipated maintenance costs. So.
We're going to prioritize.
We're going to prioritize, basically, yeah. So, and we would tell you, like, for the typical repairs, you know, that could be put out years into the future. And it really kind of depends on what type of maintenance you think you're going to do. So, and we can often, if there's going to be planned maintenance, you might, for example, have a, you know, air conditioning unit, you know, packaged air conditioning unit that's getting on its last legs. Well, instead of replacing it, maybe we're able to get another five years of life out of that by, you know, just having some maintenance done on it, and things like that, so.
You know, often with a building, and I suspect it's going to be true with this one, that you're going to have more than one issue. And one issue may be scheduled for immediate, another one might be three years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now. And if you take them in that sequence, it may well be more expensive than trying to bundle these things.
Correct.
Is that a fair statement?
If you have similar contractors that can do the same work, then yes, you're going to save money.
You don't want to be in there tearing things up multiple times every five years.
Yep.
And you probably gain some efficiency by putting them together as well.
Correct.
Is that something you would help us figure out?
Of course. But then there are other things, like, for example, your asphalt's going to need some work out here fairly soon. But your roof may not for another, you know, eight, nine, 10 years. So, and those are two entirely different trades, so.
I'm thinking more like the interior.
Sure.
You know, when you componentize things.
Yep.
You also got to keep an eye on the bigger picture, and make sure that you're not just taking them in sequence, but maybe bundling some of these things and doing them at once. Does this cover life safety?
Yes.
Do you identify life safety deficiencies according to, you know, federal, state requirements?
Not so much according to the code. What we would do is we would check with the local fire marshal to see if there's any outstanding code violations on the property. We would document the existing life safety systems that you have in place, and then tell you if they would require replacement or repair or upgrade. As part of the standard scope of work. Now, we could certainly, there's always more we can do if we're asked. And that's part of the, when we're doing the facility condition assessments and working for a property owner that has specific needs like that, that's part of the reason that the costs for a facility condition assessment can vary quite a bit, just depending on the amount of work that you want us to put into it, so.
It may not be a big issue in this building, but, and it may not be an issue in Maine. I know in other states, they'll have, if you're going to renovate, if you're going to put money into a building in excess of a certain percentage, and it might be 15%, then you've got to bring all of the life safety up to code.
Yep.
Is that, that's probably true in Maine as well. I think a lot of states have those.
Yes, yes, it is.
Have those regulations. So will you be identifying what those life safety issues are in the event we trigger that, we know what we're getting into?
That's not part of our standard scope of work, but it's, honestly, I'd have to get back with you on that. I'd have to talk with my life safety guy on that.
Okay, that's fine. And ADA?
Yes.
Do you do that as well?
Yes, and again, there are, you know, there are different levels. So the standard scope is a visual assessment, where we look at, you know, all of the approach areas and things like that. Ramps, bathrooms, all that sort of thing. Now, we're not, we don't get to the point where we're actually going to get down with a ruler and measure the slope and rise of a ramp. We'll say, this one looks compliant, or this one doesn't look compliant.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions, David?
Oh, I think it's pretty much answered everything.
Yeah, any public comment? Well, Mike, thank you very much for making that trip. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely, glad to be here.
The board has got to have some deliberations on this, and we'll be back to you, sir.
Sounds great.
Okay, any questions of us before you leave?
I guess the only question would be, how soon do you think you would make that decision?
When would you be able to do the work if they, if you were the chosen company?
Typically, you know, turnaround time for something like this is four to five weeks, from the time you say go until the time you have your reporting hands.
Four or five weeks.
I should have asked, and the cost? Let's just get that out on the record.
We had given you a cost proposal, I think it was around $20,000.
$19,250.
$19,250? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Awesome.
You're not heading back tonight?
No, no, I've got, actually, I've got a hotel in Portsmouth, so I've got a bit of drive back to Portsmouth.
It's a good town. Enjoy yourself.
Boston in the morning to fly home.
All right, well, have a safe trip. Great. Cardiographics map online renewal contract.
Yep, so next in your pile, this is a standard cardiographics contract. There have been no changes to it. As Jason can attest with me, this is a tool that's used extensively in-house, and I know by the public, so we're just asking that you renew it. Cost is exactly what we budgeted for, Tom.
Does he have the?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
$3,400?
$3,400, it's the exact same contract that we've had for the last several years.
Take a motion, sign the contract. Who's this?
Cardiographics.
Cardiographics contract.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, let's sign this in.
Yeah, I think it's just formality.
Okay.
I don't know what we'd do without our maps online. It's a big asset.
There you go, Jennifer. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, appointments. David?
Yep. So I met with Daniel Norwood today. He wants to be placed on the Mary Grant Committee. This is something that we've been starting to do, is meet with these individuals who want to be on the committees before we appoint them. And I think it's worked out pretty well, get a face-to-face, you know, conversation with them, see what's up. So I'd like to make a motion that we place Daniel Norwood on the Mary Grant Committee as a Mary Grant Committee member until.
June 30th.
6:30, 2023.
Okay. I'll second. All in favor? Great, thank you. Investment policy. This is a follow-up to an item we've been talking about now for the last couple of meetings. I, there are actually two things I want to, here, you want that? Let me sign that, and. We've talked about how our funds are currently invested, and that there are opportunities to invest in, I'd say, as safe, if, you know, better conditions than they are currently invested. I got to tell you, if anything happens with the bank, with FDIC, you're going to be waiting months to get your money. It's insured, but you're not going to get your money right away. There's a whole process to get at that. As opposed to US Treasuries, you know, basically, the US government has to default on its debt in order to, which is, I think, highly unlikely.
Spend a lot of money down there right now.
Yeah, they do, but I think they'll eventually raise the debt limit. So I had approached TD Bank and gotten a proposal, and I'd shared that with, I think you have a copy of that. And I believe their cost was $10 a transaction. And, you know, they, there might be, you know, it's $1,000 in total fees for the year, all right? Which is more than covered by the excessive interest earnings you'd realize. I've had a conversation with Schwab, which is a major player in this area as well. And they're charging 0.3% on a transaction. So just, you know, the amount we would invest in this is uncertain, but let's assume it's $5 million. That would be $15,000 a year with that service. And that's pretty typical, I think, of what many places would charge in order to manage the portfolio with this, on this. So from my, I'm happy to get something in writing if the board would like that, but, you know, this was, you know, something I got directly from them. So we need to make a decision whether or not it's something the select board is interested in doing. If it is, who we would do that with. And then prior to doing it, we would, we'd have to adopt an investment policy. And this is something, a document, that we would give to the investment manager that would very clearly lay out what they can and can't do, what kind of securities they're allowed to invest in, what they're not allowed to invest in. And I've been doing searches on the web, and many towns have these. And I happen to go to. I took a couple of policies and revised them, and I have a copy here, and you have it, we'll get it to Kim, and we can consider that at a future meeting. So, I'm trying to get this to a point where we can make a decision. So, hopefully at our next meeting, unless, David, you have some thoughts about?
I'd like to go through that ball.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. No, I'm not trying to call a decision tonight, but hopefully for our next meeting, we can discuss all of this, and if we're comfortable, make a decision.
Okay.
Fair enough. Any public comment on this? Reval, contract update. We've gotten an update from O'Donnell. They're making great progress.
Very good progress.
I think there's a schedule in here that we would want to post. Can we post this on our website?
Sure.
This will have a list of the various things that need to be done and where they are in terms of status on those things. For instance, all their field work is done, data entry is 80% done, sales analysis, which I assume is looking at recent sales underway, scheduled development, that's underway. They're planning to have notices sent in June of '23, which is when residents, property owners, will get their indication of what their new valuation will be.
Correct.
Fair enough. Is that an actual tax bill or just a notice of the?
It's a notice coming from.
Just a notice of the valuation. And then there's, there are opportunities for people to inquire about understanding where that valuation came from. You can appeal that, there'll be hearings, et cetera.
Yeah, they'll meet with people right here, they'll set up.
And that could take us through the end of July, at which time, hopefully by August, we've got this wrapped up and we're able to issue tax bills in September?
End of August.
End of August, okay. So, things are moving along well, and, girls, any questions or comments? Okay.
So, the contract that you'll sign, that was, we did verbally go over that with them before they started the field work. You guys have already agreed to the amount.
Oh, so we need a motion to sign this?
You do need to sign the actual contract.
Have we taken a motion on this already?
No, no.
Okay.
They've been very good to do that much work without one.
Make a motion to sign the contract with John E. O'Donnell and Associates.
I'll second. All in favor? Okay. You want to sign that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Am I doing the salary increase?
Well, I was going to tell you what they.
Okay, fine. All right, next agenda item is the salary increase. Jennifer, you going to tee this up?
Yes, so, many department heads and, the department heads primarily, have come to me and asked, like, because past practice, Tom, has been that, you know, there's been some workshops and discussions with the Board of Selectmen as far as what they're going to recommend for a salary increase this year.
Yeah.
You know, we don't want all the departments all over the place. We know that the Fire Department, based on last year's budget, has a plan in place that I think you'll support, but the rest of the departments, you know, whether you're flatlining 3%, 1%, 5%, they're asking what number they should be including in their budgets. They are due next Friday, the 17th, so just looking for any guidance from the board. Or, I mean, they can leave it all blank, you can make a decision later, it just does create more work down the road, so.
I think we really got to put forward some sort of number that they can base their numbers on, so that when the budget comes to us.
It's not, all right, I don't want the treasurer having to.
We don't want to have to go back and forth, back and forth, so we were talking in the office a little bit ago about inflation and Social Security. What are we at, Tom? Those are your numbers.
Well, I thought Social Security this past year went up, God, it was 9%, wasn't it?
No.
No, 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 it was, it was, it was at least 8.5, 8.7%, close to 9%. I'm pretty sure.
8.7%.
Thank you. 8.7%. So, that's, that's an indication of what the federal government says was inflation for the calendar year 2022, or, actually, I think it was through September, a 12-month period ending in September is the way they do it. Point is, it's the annual inflation rate at that point. So, that's Social Security. If you look at the CPI, we could probably, I could do a search, I haven't done that yet, but my guess, it's going to be 7%, 8% range, because it may have come down, and if we do it as of December, it started to come down in the last quarter. Have you got a number?
6.5.
6.5, okay. So, 6.5, Social Security did a little better, but let's focus on the 12-month calendar year CPI. I think that's the appropriate thing for us to focus on.
Yeah.
So, that's 6.5?
Yes, sir.
Okay. David, do you have a comment on this?
Well, we're throwing around numbers of 5% or 6%. Last year was 7%. So, I think a 6% would be fine.
There'll be an opportunity for this to continue to be looked at and adjusted, obviously?
Have them come in, let's do this, let's have them come in with a 5%.
Okay.
Okay, let's do 5%. That way, there, they get their numbers in.
Yeah.
And we'll see the numbers, and if we decide to adjust, we can do that at that time, but I'd like to have at least a 5% increase. That way, there, we have something to give to the Finance Committee, let them chew on that.
I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, we're not taking a vote on any of this.
No, no. Just looking for something.
This is just for the purpose of populating some spreadsheets to give us an approximation of what our operating budget will look like based on those numbers.
Yeah, because, you know, if we, if we turn around, and we were talking before, we were talking, okay, well, we'll just have them send in their numbers like they were and let us throw 100% on top, that's going to throw all their numbers off on the bottom line. So, I think this will be the cleanest way to do it, and then we can start mulling away at it, we'll see what we come up with, you know, and if it's too much, you know, if it starts, you know, crazy on us, then we'll have to kick it back a little bit, but we'll start there.
So, well, do we need to send a letter to the department head? You going to take care of that?
Did you?
Thank you, Jennifer. Send a letter to department heads, and of course, the Chair of the Warrant Finance Committee is here, but we ought to make sure they understand that as well, you know, what the plan is. Fair enough, and there'll be an opportunity for the Warrant Finance Committee to deliberate on that, and we'll see where this goes. Any other comment from anyone?
Does, does this, because I don't know. How do we include or do we include individual raises? You know, someone gets a review, they've done an outstanding job in a particular period of time.
We're, at this point in time, we're not doing individual, unless an individual had been hired in a certain period of time, within a six-month review, that would be, that'd be a different circumstance.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
But at this point in time, we're doing it across the board, because that's why we're going off the Social Security. If we were going to go off performance, we wouldn't go by that, we'd be doing individual, each individual would be getting their own rates. We don't feel that at this point in time, at least I don't feel at this point in time, that's the way to go. If we do that, we end up getting behind the eight ball somehow. We stay with inflation and Social Security, we should stay up with everybody like we've been trying to get to.
Right.
So, at this point, the only ones that would be doing different at this point, I think, would be the Fire Department, correct? Because we had an agreement last year that we would.
Yeah, that was the last year's thing.
An idea.
$250.
And Wayne is, Wayne is collecting data on that, that will substantiate that that's an appropriate amount.
Yeah.
And so, we'll, we'll take that under eye. Go ahead.
But what we did last year is, and the year before, we've been going through everybody's position and seeing what the rates are.
Yeah.
We're trying to get those, we try to get those rates to the, we don't want to be Cape Elizabeth and all those big high-paying ones, we want to be, but we don't want to be the bottom of the barrel either.
We need to be the market price.
We want to be in the middle, and that's where, I think we're getting there.
Yeah.
I believe that's where we're getting, so if we get there and we sustain inflation and continue on, we should stay there.
Right.
Of course, obviously, when we hire new people on, things change, this and that, but I think that's the only way we're going to sustain that, is by an overall raise across the board.
Personally, I think the question you're raising is a good one.
Yeah.
In that, as I think back about the past couple of decades, when inflation was high, many organizations had a salary pool, and they would take a certain amount of that, and they consider that sort of across the board.
Right.
You know, let's say it was 6%, and 3% across the board, and the other 3% would be put into a merit pool. And that would be based upon the evaluations of individuals, so that, you know, perhaps everyone got a piece of that, maybe not, and some people would get more than others based on their performance. I personally think that is a wonderful way of doing it. When inflation was 2% or 3%, it wasn't enough to break up that way.
Right, exactly.
You couldn't do it. But now with inflation coming back, with more, more substantial salary pools, I think it's something for the town to consider.
Yeah, I'm, because, I mean, we can look just around in this room and going through COVID. There are people sitting right there.
Yeah.
Who almost single-handedly kept this town going with that. And, you know, I think things like that do need, I understand perfectly, David's saying.
It's tough, you know, in a situation.
It is tough, but, you know.
Because the problem you have is, is being such a small employment pool.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes it very tough, okay, to do, you know, evaluations, everybody up here gets along so well. I don't believe the evaluation process here works. I don't think it would work, unless someone is doing a terrible job, okay? Because everybody appreciates everything everybody's doing here, and we know some people do more than others, we do. But those people there, at the end of the day, any individual in this town hall that feels that they're being underpaid, I think that we give them the opportunity to come to us. If we put forward a 5% or 6%, we did that a couple of years ago, but we did have individuals, we did pay higher than the 7% because they were underpaid already.
Right, yeah.
So, the way we look at it, that was our performance, you know.
Performance review.
Pretty much what it was, because we looked, that position's underpaid for what that person did, we made that adjustment on the fly.
Yeah, I just, that goes into what I'm.
And I think that's kind of the same idea.
Thinking that you have good people, you want to give, you want to keep good people, and, you know, atta boys don't buy groceries.
Yeah, that's right.
All the atta boys in the world don't go and buy a dozen eggs anymore, so that's all.
And the other.
Unless you buy them at the Farm Store, they're only $4.
Good for you.
I said, unless you buy them at the Roos Farm Store, they're only $4 a dozen.
Just a little.
No advertisements, please, on TV.
I'm sorry.
But could you erase that from the tape?
That was just, oh, that was funny.
The other problem we're having too is, it's not just the appreciation factor is, is we're trying to keep them because down the street is paying more money.
Oh, yeah.
And so, we're trying to combat that, that's why last year we did that, and the year before we did that with some positions. We made individual raises, but we tried to do across the board to keep up with inflation.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other comment? Dennis?
I think you need to take in consideration more than just what the national inflation rate is, because the state, within the state, is different. What the cost of living would be in the state of Maine would probably be different than it would be in South Carolina.
Sure.
And so, if the national average is the number you're using, the rate of inflation in Maine could be four points higher.
Well, let's find out.
I know, I know.
Find out. I know there's a New England index. I didn't know there was a Maine index.
I know in New Hampshire, a month or so ago, the inflation rate in New Hampshire was around 15.
So, a 15% raise, that'd be a, that'd be a doozy, now, wouldn't it?
Well, let's find out what it says.
No, I'm just saying.
You're excited over there, Dave.
Dennis said, I get your point.
Yeah.
Let's find out what it is. I, as I say.
Or we can just go off the national average and look at what we've been doing the last two years, and going from town to town and seeing what people are being paid, that's what we're doing.
Maine is 5.4 in 2023.
So, it's actually a little less.
It's a little less than that.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if it is.
Yeah.
Every state's to be different, I mean, the cost of living in Massachusetts is a hell of a lot more than it is here.
Yeah.
You know, so, but if you do the national average, but we're already, we're already doing our homework, we're going to, before we get too crazy with raises, we're going to.
We'll have a chance to continue to talk about this, Dennis, and the Warrant Finance Committee can as well. All right, thank you for that comment. Pending items, well, public comment. I always drop over this, because we have so many during the meeting. Any public comment? Okay. Pending items, West Shore Drive, Culver?
I haven't heard a thing.
No, but I was, was telling Tom, I think you were chatting with Jason, we just got an email, interesting email from Inland Fisheries, saying that, basically saying that they haven't heard anything since they were last here.
Okay, well, let's drop an email and see what's going on with that.
Yeah, well, Maureen was CC'd in this, so I thought it would be interesting if she replied, because didn't she tell us that she reached out to them?
Yeah, she said after the holidays, she was going to reach out to them and all that, whether or not she's still on holiday leave, I don't know.
You and I will follow up.
So, we want to follow up on that, see what's going on.
Have we got a schedule?
We've asked her for one.
Yeah, she really needs to do a schedule.
Why don't we do a Zoom meeting? Would be awesome.
Okay.
And we'll get a list of questions there, if you've got any questions.
Be here at a select meeting, or you're going to do it as better than?
At home or whatever, if you're like, if you're last time.
Yeah, that's fine.
But let's, if you've got any questions you'd like to ask, jot them down, give them to me.
I'm more interested in.
Just a timeline.
Give me a timeline, one of the major decision points, and I just want to make sure we get this down this year.
Yeah, because she did tell us, after the holidays, she was going to get right on this and get things rolling, and I know she said the surveys were going out there and this and that, and we haven't heard anything since, so.
Okay.
I think let's do a Zoom.
We'll get something scheduled for next week.
Yeah.
Apparently, budgets are due February 17th.
Sure.
And I know I've got a couple of meetings scheduled, I've got one with Robin and one with Wayne. Actually, Wayne was, I was going to do after the 17th, right?
We moved to the 22nd.
22nd, good.
And we need to figure out.
I'd like to mention some of the public comment.
Sure.
You all done with what you were talking about? I thought you were done.
I am, go ahead.
Okay. So, Saturday, we decided to close the transfer station, okay? At first, they were talking about closing down the recycling facility, and then I interjected my thoughts into this, and due to the fact that there was other towns doing the same thing, this was going to be a very different situation where you, we're not used to 45 below degree wind chills and 20 below like that, I felt it was a safety hazard to have anybody on the public. I didn't want to invite the public there.
Yeah.
I didn't want the employees having to go out and interact with these people into that, and I was worried about the compactor and the hydraulic systems and all that, so I felt that it was just a better idea to close it down.
Yeah.
So, but in the future, I did talk to Robin about possibly, you know, looking for an out where we might be able to do like a next day, like on a Sunday, if it happens on a Saturday like that, we can post something, maybe possibly do a four hours on Sunday just to make up for that day being done, just because of the circumstances, but, um, but we'll work differently next time and see if we can make something happen.
Terrific.
Back to the budgets, Tom, if you can, just for a second, so I just want to know what the board's plan is, as I have my schedule. So the budgets are due the 17th of February.
Yes.
As we look at calendars, I mean, what, you know, are we going to have a workshop amongst, you know, the four of us, including the Treasurer and the, and Kim, just to kind of get the budgets on the same page, or, you know, before we turn them all over to the Warrant and Finance, um, their meeting on March 6th? Now, I did send Dennis an email, um, and we agreed that Monday, March 13th, that we would have a warrant to him around Monday, March 13th.
Okay.
So, so that they can start looking at it.
We will have completed our work on the, on the, uh.
Yes.
On the budget.
I mean, yeah, so we really need to, you know, once these come in on the 17th, we really need to think about having, you know, some time to go through them and figure out what numbers.
So that would give us about a month to get through these.
Yes.
So what, you want to have a workshop, you said?
Well, that's the thing, I mean, we've got to, at some point, we've got to put this warrant together, so, you know.
And I would, I would think that would be around March 1st. Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you want to.
Right around March 1st, so, you know, we will have all the budgets, the Treasurer will have been able to get them in the system, give us reports, we can meet, review those budgets.
And see what you want going on the warrant.
We can make any revisions we need to, and we got a couple of weeks to do that, then we can get it to the Warrant and Finance Committee, what was it, the 13th?
Yes, that was the date that we, we tentatively set, right?
So the first would be on Wednesday. You think about maybe having a.
I was just saying around the first.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, what I'm, what I'm trying to do.
So I guess the piece I'm struggling with, and, well, first of all, I mean, is the 13th is a date that we agreed that I would, you'd send it, I'd send it to you by.
Give us the warrant, yes.
Okay, give you the warrant. So what we've run into in the past, I'm not saying, is that, you know, as I look at the schedule, so March 6th, a week before we're going to give them the warrant, they're going to meet with the Rec Department, the Cable, the Library, and the Transfer Station, and some of the things that we've found in the past, we'll pick on Robin, because he knows we love him, and he's here, he puts this extravagant project for, that you're not going to put on the warrant, there's really no need for him to present it to the Warrant and Finance.
No, that's, that's why if, what we should be doing is having a workshop before that.
Well, we kind of, right, because we kind of want the Warrant and Finance to only be talking about what you're going to put on the warrant.
Exactly, that's why I'm.
Right? I mean, if you're not going to put it on there, it doesn't make any reason.
That's why I'm thinking what we ought to do is bring everybody, do a workshop on the fir, the 1st, which is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
We can come in at like a couple hours before our meeting.
Yeah.
Say at 3:00.
And ask them each to come in.
And have them come in, present their budget.
Yeah.
Okay, and that would give us time.
Well, if we, if we have them on the 17th, we can review them on the 22nd, some of them you're not going to want to see, I mean.
Let me ask you a question, though, and this is of Dennis. If the warrants, you aren't going to get the warrants until the 13th, why would you meet with departments beforehand?
Because there's two things we do, Tom, in the ordinance. We, we look at the legalities of the warrant articles themselves, and then the second part of the ordinance says that we research the data to defend the dollar amount that we're recommending.
If you don't have a dollar.
And. And, uh, a few meetings ago, uh, it was stated that the Warrant Finance would be able to, um, get the budgets from the departments after they're due on the 17th. And so I told the Warrant Finance Committee, and I sent Jen an email saying that, that they'd be able to do that, but we want to see what the department's budgets were. We don't, and you, the warrant you guys put through might be exactly the same, but we want to see what they're asking for, so that hopefully the people on the Warrant Finance Committee can do their research on data, uh, so they'll have the questions to ask.
What they've done in the past, Tom, is that, you know, if, you know, and unfortunately the roads is a general area, the road guys ask for $500,000 in paving, you know what I mean? It, it seems to have caused more discussion and unnecessary conflict, if the board's only going to move forward $300,000 paving, because that's what they have for money, then, you know, I mean, there's, is there a real reason for this full discussion and, you know, about the $500,000, if the number's not ever going to be on the warrant?
Well, there's two ways to go about this.
That's been the thought in the past.
What you do.
Just makes the board look bad, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, it does make the board look bad, and a lot of the times, that's what it's set up to do.
Because the committee will then support the $500.
Because whenever you meet with a, you know, you, if you don't have a budget and numbers to even research, then you don't research it. What we should be doing, we will give the Finance Committee their, the budget, and if they want to request what the departments requested, if there was any changes, we can give that to them at that time, okay? But to have them go ahead and do research on numbers they don't even know until the budget is presented before the fact doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, no, he's, what he's saying is that he, they're looking for the raw budget on the 17th, or right around the 17th after it comes in, they want to see it as submitted. And in the, you know, so the question is, do we send them that, or are we sending them the warrant on the 13th? Because are they going to be the same document, are they going to be different?
I would do, but I, I, you know, there are other parties.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah.
But he's right, he did, did send the emails indicating, I mean, they've always wanted the raw budgets, but past practice has, you know what I mean, has caused issues sometimes, if.
Turns into a crap show by doing that.
If you don't put forward, if you don't put forward what the department head wants, do you know what I mean?
Tom, so this is, this is what happens, this is what's happened in the past. A road commissioner asks for $900,000 in paving, this has happened, okay? And we say, no way, we can't afford that, so we, we put down that you're going to get 300, okay? And then the Warrant Finance Committee sits up to the whole time saying, well, you really need a million dollars, and da-da-da-da-da, and the selectmen are doing bad.
That's kind of the process, though.
It is.
I mean, that's, that's the function.
But let us, let us get our budget in first, so they have something to compare it by.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, the committee shall review all proposed warrant articles, so you kind of need to create a warrant article.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, it's, but, you need, I mean, and it doesn't make any difference, I just need to know what to send them, when to send them, but the board.
Let me ask something.
You need to see it first.
If we give you the budgets on the 13th, and you have the raw budgets that came from the departments, and the selectmen have stripped some things out or added some things in, let's say they stripped some things out, what you're going to get is a, a warrant reflecting the, the board's decision.
Right.
Right.
And what you can then do is either recommend it or not.
Right.
So it's, it's not going to necessarily change, but what it will impact is your decision as to whether to recommend to the, to the town meeting that this be passed or not.
Yeah.
So the budgets don't change, David?
At the end of the day, that budget that we, that warrant article that we give, that raw warrant article should be actually the only one they see.
Yeah, well.
Okay, no, but at the end of the day, their job is to vote on the article put forward at hand.
It is the only warrant article we see.
It's the only warrant article, he means budget.
But the budget, but, but, but the budget.
What rest of the ordinance is, the finances, Jen.
But the budget that's put through on the warrant article, okay, should be the one sent from us.
That's right.
The departments don't give the warrant, the, the.
I understand.
The numbers.
No, I get that.
So whatever comes from us, comes from us.
That's right.
And we can be transparent.
And that's going to be on the warrant.
And, and say, okay, this is what they wanted, this is what we wanted, that should be all at the same time, but this is the warrant article.
When we give that warrant to the Warrant Finance Committee, has the Board of Selectmen taken a vote, a final vote on that warrant?
No.
No, we don't do that until we get the recommendations from them and everybody else.
So it is iterative. We'll develop the warrant, a draft warrant.
Yep.
We share that with you. You then have the department budgets as well, and we can have a discussion if there's a difference of opinion about that, right? And we can decide to, as a, as a selectman, whether to accept that or not.
So what?
Any suggestions coming from the Warrant and Finance Committee?
But then, so, to do that, they got, there would have to be a time in between where we'd have to make those adjustments, and then come back to it, and hoping that they ride with that, because they have to make a recommendation on that.
Does this schedule build that in, Jennifer?
No, that's what the Saturday meeting originally was for, was, you know what I mean? The Saturday meeting, I mean, I guess we need to, let's just, let's not get to, let's get the budgets, let's get the budgets in on the 17th.
Yeah.
Look at them, I mean, because in all honesty, I mean, we're hopeful that.
There'd be a lot of difference, to be honest with you, that we're going to.
I think what we should be doing is what we've done in the past, we let the budgets come in.
Right.
We'll have our workshop, we'll go over them, obviously, if there's some major dramatic thing that we have to change on it. We will change it, we will let the Finance Committee know that, but at the end of the day, we create our budget warrant article.
Yeah.
Submit it to them, their job is to say yea or nay. Their job is to do the research whether or not it's good or bad.
But they also have an opportunity to help to.
No, they don't.
But wait a minute, I, that's what I thought we just talked about, they have an opportunity to potentially impact the selectmen's final decision on the warrant.
Well, they could give their opinions and all that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
But at the end of the day, their job is to vote on the warrant article at hand.